Okay, we'll go on to the approval of the minutes of April 1st and session reading of April 8th. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it. Second.
Um, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Propose? Abstention? All right, now, the, uh, any adjustments we have?
We have none.
And now, we have this portion set aside for any persons desiring to address the board this evening.
Board chair basically now has a function at the museum tonight, so he'll be with us. Under personnel, we have no resignations, we have no nominations, we have no transfers, so we'll go right to the reading and essential behaviors and outcomes, that's John.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate. And our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, John. Ema, I'll have you inter the presentation by Brittany and our guests.
Sure, I'll introduce School Health Coordinator Brittany Lemon. We mentioned, oh, I think about a couple of meetings ago in regards to incorporating a beekeeping segment in our science curriculum at the high school. Mr. Cowan, Mr. Peter Cowan is here this evening. The Bee Whisperer is here to give a presentation on what that would look like. And so, mainly for me is to say, I think the perception is if there's bees on campus, what does that, is that a safety issue? And he's going to address that, so Brittany.
Well, I have Mr. Cowan here to present the Bee Project. He is our local celebrity, you may see him on TV. Today, I am kidless, I do want to point that out. But I'm actually not going to do any of this meeting. I'm going to let Peter go ahead and do his presentation, and if you have any questions, just let us know.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for giving me the opportunity here. My name is Peter Cowan. I'm a beekeeper, keeping a number of hives in Hampden, about 25 to 50 hives in Hampden. And I'm also a president of Penobscot County Beekeepers, a chapter of the Maine State Beekeepers Association. My wife, Ann, who works in the library here, suggested that as we were hosting the Maine State Beekeepers Association annual meeting, we actually would host, should have hosted it at Hampden Academy, which we did last year, and had 225 beekeepers from all over the state attend the annual meeting and conference here. And again, this year, we'll be hosting that meeting here on November 14th of this year. And it was on the back of that that I suggested why not getting a club started up with beekeeping in Hampden Academy, as a number of staff have been expressing interest in it. So, we put a project together. So, the aim is to have a beekeeping club in the school involving staff and students, where they would get the, be able to tie in to the school curriculum, the beekeeping, the importance of honeybees to the environment, and a number of aspects of beekeeping, from building their own hives, to honeybee husbandry and the importance of it, the impact they have on the local environment, harvesting honey, selling products, and having a small business model as a result of it. And then to present bee-based projects to an audience, for instance, the annual meeting of Maine State Beekeepers in fall. We've so far looked at funding and have already received a research grant from University of Maine of $1,200, and a few more applications in process for agriculture in the classroom, and awesome grants. There are potential Quimby Grant as well. There is a number of opportunities for sponsorship of the apiary, of the hives, of the equipment, and so, we see potential funding sources. A lot of organizations wanting to be associated with beekeeping in the community. And from my experience in beekeeping in the community, there is a lot of people that we can call upon to look for assistance with the funding. Also, some, an element in the future, as products are being produced, like honeys and lip balms and hand creams, there could be sales from the project, and that in itself could bring back more funds. There are other schools in the country that have been keeping bees on the premises, so it's not without precedent. But for example, in Vermont, Rocky Point School has had bee hives on the grounds there, within 10 yards of the soccer fields, without a fence, and so far with no issues. We propose to take a few more proportions than that. We've looked at potential apiary sites. The ideal, in the longer run, would be the roof outside the science rooms. We've also looked at the outdoor classroom site in front of the school, and potential, and also at the, what we're focusing on at the moment is the southwest corner of the parking lot at the moment. So ideally, those hives could be located on the roof, far away from people, and be viewed safely from the science rooms, and maximum convenience of viewing. But it's also likely to have the highest costs associated with access to it. The next best location is that southwest corner of the parking lot, in the region of the last two or three bays of that parking lot, overlooking the fields to the south. It's a very low traffic area, and likely to also be the lowest cost to do the project. So this would be looking from the science rooms onto the roof space, and this is the area in the southwest corner of the parking lot.
It doesn't look like that now. It's a little less now.
Yep. It's quite away from the school itself, over 500 feet from the school, and over 150 feet from the nearest area which is frequented by students, which would be the athletic track. So quite away from any of the active areas. The proposal would be to have the, Hampden Academy apiary would have a fence surrounding it to both, several people to keep, purposes to keep people out, and animals out for that matter, but also to deflect the flight of bees, so that they're not flying straight out at ground level, they're flying up out of the fence, and then they'd proceed as normal to over tree line, so that they could fly out to areas to collect food. And that would deflect the path of any bee traffic away from the public. Honeybees will travel a radius of about three miles in search of food and water, and there's approximately 100 honeybee colonies within a three-mile radius of Hampden Academy. And therefore, there's not going to be an appreciable increase in numbers of bees in the immediate area. Neighbors owning the fields to the south have been contacted and see no problem with locating the hives there. And on the safety side of things, the hive fence would deflect bee flights and paths to keep out of authorized staff and students, and those that going into that compound would be wearing protective clothing. And staff at Hampden Academy are also trained to recognize and deal with bee allergic reactions. There's also, a part of this would be ideally to include an observation hive within the building itself. That would allow students to observe the goings-on inside the bee hive and see the, to see much more closely the behavior, the bee dance would be a very good teaching tool, to be able to see all the goings-on inside the hive with absolute safety. And that's the way it would look, just being the bees flying out through the wall or window of the building. The insurance people have been contacted, Liberty Mutual have reported back very promptly, and said it would be an acceptable exposure as long as the proper protocols and the best practice procedures are followed. And that's my role, as the experienced beekeeper in the area, to help guide that. There are challenges, of course, the time constraints in choosing that location, and making sure that we have the opportunity to answer questions, and ultimately, get your approval to go ahead with this project, and then, of course, the funding, to put further funding in place to take it on to grow. So this project would certainly be unique, and certainly generate significant interest. Already have, WABI are very interested in following it if we should go ahead. And other schools would like, I'm sure, I've been contacted by a number of schools around the state, and should this go ahead, I'm sure it would be a model for other schools, both in this state and other states to follow. And this is just a rough outline of the sorts of things that we'd like to see taking place with the bees, doing, the students doing a number of projects, and get the, a couple of hives up and running, an observation hive up and running before the, during this current semester. And then, the fall semester, students making a presentation to, about their experience with keeping bees at Hampden Academy and initiating such a project. And to really get going with the curriculum tie-ins, both really this first semester seeing the potential of it, next semester starting to work with it, and in the spring semester potentially expand it and really develop those tie-ins for the curriculum. So, at your disposal for any questions, but otherwise, I was told to keep it brief, so that is brief.
Who told you that, Brittany? Who told you to keep it brief? Very good, thank you.
Okay.
So what is the funding? You know, we said funding is a challenge, we have a $1,200 grant. How much to get this initially implemented and then to sustain?
$1,200 would cover the cost of bees, the equipment, and protective equipment for students. And that would be enough to get the ball rolling, and have basically two hives up and running, and protective equipment for six students. What we'd look for is other sponsorship to develop that and look at the potential of adding observation hive, more protective equipment for more students to be involved, and just grow it from there.
Yep. Estimated cost of the fencing?
The, Ema is looking into the fencing side.
Yeah, we're looking at that right now. I don't have any answers, Brittany, John.
I'm good. Sorry, I kind of, we're going to be meeting with the gentleman from the Beck Fencing.
Mr. With, yeah.
Yeah, Reagan, you're setting up for me in the next meeting.
So we'll know soon. I wouldn't think that'd be more than $500 to $1,200.
Yeah, probably $500 or better.
Is, would this be something that you could make a donation to the RSU 22 Foundation, have the funds directed towards that, since it's not a 501(c) or how?
That's a good question.
I'm sure the president would consider that.
That would definitely make, you know, an attractive option. Catch it off, unless you put up a billboard advertising, then I could write it off that way.
Well, there's no reason why you couldn't if you have approval, but the logo on the bee hive, the hive sponsored by, if you're responsible.
That's another option for you.
But are you sure you want to have your name attached to honey?
No.
Plus, he's one of the neighbors out there, too.
Yeah. I'll put some blueberry bushes in my backyard, then.
Rui, you want to talk about how it goes against the science curriculum? You want to say a few words on that?
Well, I think, in addition to the science curriculum, we'll have students that are interested in that whole business plan and marketing, and I think that would be a really interesting club opportunity, but that might grow into some other curriculum things. The observation hive that, where the, actually, the hive is inside the school, and there's a pipe that goes out the window or whatever, so the bees are coming in and out, will probably be in our, what we call our transitional biology lab. It's the third lab down from this end of the building. And that lab is where we teach environmental science. So a lot of the focus, in my opinion, is going to be at the AP Environmental Science place, but the, all the biology teachers will be doing some, creating something to have the biology students really work, look at that. An interesting thing is also talking about trying to educate students in general, so this might be starting at the ninth grade level in Science 9, about reducing the amount of pesticides that we put on our lawns, because the bees won't, you know, if you just make everything green grass, green crazy grass, and have no flowers, and no clover, and things like that, they're really limiting the bee, you know, what the bees are going to be doing. And so, I think some of our education will be kind of at that level, and probably at the Science 9 level.
We have a lot of new board members, the other thing is, the roof was designed to have like an outdoor lab, so that's why the roof concept came up. And we are looking at, as my fact, she needs roofing has come up, has taken measurements, and are going to give us some estimates for Mr. Cowan and for Brittany. Brittany's really facilitating this for us in regards to what the cost would be and how it would be associated, because we don't want to affect any warranties on that roof by this project. That's the other thing we're doing.
Is that why it's perceived to be the highest cost?
Yes, definitely.
Would we need to have floaters to keep the roof from being worn?
Yes, they've talked about floaters, and they have a walk-in ramp. The key, one of the problems is it's not ADA accessible.
It says building ramps and platforms.
So you have to have building ramps and platforms to make it ADA accessible to the roof.
So that's why we're going to the.
That's why we're going to the.
The parking lot, the corner of the parking lot.
Is this something offered at UTC, or would this be like a new opportunity for students in the area?
I'm pretty sure that UTC has a different one.
This is unique. This will be unique.
This is the brand, this is unique.
Good Will Hinkley does neither.
I couldn't find it when I was researching in the state, that's where I came across the.
Peter, do you know of any schools in the state of Maine doing this at all?
There was one agricultural school, I believe.
Yeah.
Means.
Means. I have no idea.
But I've never got a response from them, I inquired. I just heard that that was a possibility. But I'm also being approached at the moment by Mount Desert Island and Georgetown Middle School. So people around the state are asking me to consult with them and look into this.
We're probably further along than anybody.
Yes, by all means.
Think there'd be an agricultural grant where, I mean, that's untapped.
We're looking at Maine Agriculture in the Classroom.
Yeah.
And there's a $3,000 startup grant, and that's due in, we have it almost put together. Emily Albee's been writing our grant for us, and has done an excellent job getting all that information together, so I'm very hopeful for that.
Yeah, we have a lot of faculty involved with this, and we have a lot of people involved in trying to get this.
Oh, absolutely. We have a small, a group of faculty that have been meeting kind of on a regular basis, because they're so interested, and some of them have their own hives. And so, I think they'll be a really great resource for us. We haven't opened it up to students until we have the board say, this is something that we will approve and move forward with.
Yeah, because the thought was, when Rui and I talked about it, Brittany, this is so unique, and I was kind of, Liberty Mutual is our insurance company, and it's such an unusual, I guess, program that we just wanted you to make sure that it's safe, we, you know, we've looked into this, and we're just not going, you know, willy-nilly and going off. So we wanted you to approve the concept so that we can move forward and incorporate in that school.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with this program.
Second.
Cut you right off.
You would, you would.
No. I could tell by his pause.
I was going to say, pending a rider from Liberty Mutual, but I mean, it sounds like they've already made.
Oh, that's all that's.
It is. Is there any of the Smile Dogs?
Discussion?
I won't talk to you about that, observation hive.
Great. All those that favor the motion? Very nice.
Thank you.
Very nice presentation.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Reagan, it's your turn. So Reagan's going to talk to us about the Smarter Balance Managed Educational Assessment. And I think she might also encourage you to do a little bit of homework, is that correct, Reagan?
Full of homework. At your leisure. We'll get to the homework. So, this evening, each month, you've been hearing from a different school about different programs and such that have been going on, and we had started to make a plan about how we were going to talk to you about some of our curriculum changes that we were working on. But when we got into the Smarter Balance world and started moving forward with our birding being trained and the students doing this, we decided, we thought we'd like to update you about how this has gone. We concluded our testing yesterday, with the exception of makeup. And so, we have some, I'd say, rather positive information to share, considering the hullabaloo that Smarter Balance has brought to us. So just quickly, our presentation is quite concise here, and there are so many resources out there on the internet about Smarter Balance. They've done an exceptional job of trying to keep every state that is part of their consortium well-informed. So many of these slides you can find in multiple places, but I felt this one presentation did a very nice job of keeping it concise into the point. So, we used to take the Kneecap, and for those of you who do have students who had been in third grade or higher during the Kneecap phase, you may have played about that test. Smarter Balance test, of course, is focused on common core, and the most significant change is that we moved to the web-based platform. And our students did pretty well by that, considering the technology that our district has enjoyed at almost all of the grade levels now. We have some options with this type of assessment, where you can actually do interim assessments that are shorter versions of the actual comprehensive in preparation, so that you can see what areas your students might need to work on. And then, you also have different item types that we hadn't encountered before. On Kneecap, for instance, you would have multiple choice, pretty traditional, you'd have constructive response. We're seeing now with the Smarter Balance, that when you go into a multiple choice situation, it's also what, it's called multiple select. So there isn't just one answer, like C, to necessarily go for it. They ask you, select all that apply in this case, select all that would not apply in this case. It really pushes the kids, I think, to make some more value to choices. And then, we have a different timing in the test, we have a pretty large window. The next slide is showing you the number of states that participate in Smarter Balance, and we enjoy partnering with many of these states for resources, for guides for how to be communicating with the communities as this rolled out. Some states are having more difficulty than others, and what I'm reading about it, I think right now, Wisconsin is one, states could have selection in who they chose as a contractor to enroll the test. Maine has enjoyed quite a bit of success. We have some other states, the contracting didn't work as well, and they still haven't even started with the test, so that's a bit unfortunate. So, the whole point of Smarter Balance right now is to make sure there is a significant emphasis on the common core standards, that it does have a bit of an adaptive nature to it, so students can start to experience a testing situation that is more likely to fit their personal achievement level. And then to give the teachers more instantaneous information, so they can be making better decisions instructionally, and also give them information throughout a school year, instead of just at one point. So, we have tests right now that are present for English Language Arts, and that includes both reading and writing, and math. And those are occurring in every grade 3 through 8, and then the 11th graders, junior class, will be experiencing this here at the academy. We are certainly hopeful that we will get the information back in the middle of June, that's what they're preaching, and that it will give us information about the specific standards that we are working on as they move toward the high school. So, this is part that's been interesting for us. The computer adaptive portion of the test occurred in both math and reading and writing, and the students had different aspects that they needed to attend to, but the questions were unique based on their performance. So if you got a question correct, you were served up, a question that probably was increasing in rigor or maybe complexity. And we're hearing that the adaptation moved about a grade level ahead or lower, depending on your performance. Then you move into a classroom activity, and we have teachers here tonight who can speak to you about this. The teachers were required to instruct a 30-minute lesson to the students, and they would then take that information within two to three days and use it for a performance task, which actually required them to kind of apply multiple standards to a performance that had some relation, somewhat loose at times, to the classroom activity. But it was an interesting way to test. So the performance tasks generally took an hour in math, or up to two hours in language arts, and really asked that kids write quite a bit about what they were reasoning, thinking, and why they had the decisions being made, they did. I think that what I've seen, I'm basically coordinating makeups. I cannot believe the effort that these students are putting forth. I just, the other day, I applauded a group. I said, for you to come here and be in a makeup situation, and know that you only have to do maybe four more, and put this much into it, it's great. We're all seeing the kids really take it very seriously. So here's the testing time, and the testing time is recommended. I'd love to get the teacher's opinion on this as well, but I think for the most part, it has stayed pretty true to the estimated testing time, with the exception of the fact we have very high performers in our schools, and very determined youngsters. And when that occurs, they put in the extra time. So I would say, the number of students that took less than the estimated time is very low, and the number of students who are persevering beyond this, probably higher than Smarter Balance would have expected.
Speaking of effort, do colleges look at these numbers? I mean, is this, is this a test that goes anywhere other than the guidance counselors of the individual schools?
Well, that's a great question, and Rui can speak to you about this affecting our school profile for Hampden Academy.
So, I'm not aware at this point that any colleges are going to be asking for individual student Smarter Balance assessment scores. How it affects us collectively is probably the next time we meet, I'll be doing a presentation, and I can show you this school profile. But colleges require a school profile that have our demographics, how our grading system works, how, what our previous class placement was post-secondary. And the most important part for the colleges is we have to submit to them our SAT scores collectively, our AP scores collectively, and now, our Smarter Balance assessment scores collectively. So, let's say that a college had eight students that were fairly equal in their individual applications. They then take those school profiles, and they look at what our school in totality does, and base, and make some assumptions about the quality of our educational system based on those scores.
So it helps calibrate the individual high schools one to another, so one school isn't padding their grades, so to speak.
That's correct.
Giving out higher GPAs across the board.
That's correct. So, I'll be happy to bring that to you folks and explain it at some point.
Well, that's why the kids would want to put effort in, as opposed to it just being another test that they have to take.
That's correct.
So, I think this is a nice place to stop, because we're going to be just having a few slides that talk about the actual standards that we've been focusing on through this test. But I think it's important that you hear about the student and the teacher experience here, because quite frankly, I think. because, quite frankly, I think we went into this very well-prepared. Our whole district has partnered beautifully. Hampden Academy gave up 100 laptops for over two weeks so that Reesbrock could utilize laptops instead of iPads, which made things go very smoothly. I think we were well-aware of what resources we had through our curriculum office. And I have to say, Mary Giar and Cindy Carlisle did all of the work around the data entry that was required district to district to get this underway. And that was quite a charge that was given to each SAU, so thank you for that. But I think our children were very well-prepared because of the efforts teachers put into it and the attitude that everyone brought to it, that this was something we could step into and be successful. If it's something new, get somewhat excited about that if you can. And we've had some interesting remarks. So I'd like to introduce Nancy Simpson. She's one of our math teachers at Reesbrock. Jen Bowman McKay teaches sixth grade Language Arts. And Karen Field teaches eighth grade Language Arts. I'm just gonna turn it over to them just to talk with you and ask them questions because they know it best.
So I teach sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math at Reesbrock. So I had students from all three grade levels. And most students took, we have 50-minute math classes, and most students took three days, three math classes, to work on their Smarter Balance test. They took, we took two days on the CAT test, so that's the computer adaptive test. That took two class periods for most students. So they spent somewhere between 90 minutes and maybe close to two hours on that. Then we had to do the performance, we had to do the classroom activity around the performance task. And I think my, if I have a complaint, it's that the classroom activity, at least in math, there was no activity really there. I was thinking that there might be a little bit more, something more to that. But it's really a discussion, trying to lay the foundation and make sure that all students were going into their performance task with the same vocabulary. I'll give you an example from the practice test that we did. I can do that, right? Okay. So for the Mr. Lyons, you would really like this one.
All right.
For the eighth graders, their practice performance task, we had to have classroom discussion about baseball. And so I had the opportunity to prepare for that any way I want. So you can probably imagine where I might have gotten some videos for that, right? So, but the point was to make sure that all of the students in my class understood something about baseball, something about what baseball stadiums look like. And so we're talking about this without really having any idea where this is going. Like, what are the kinds of questions that are gonna be asked the next day or answered the next day that they need this foundation about baseball? And so, of course, I have some kids in the class who play baseball and other kids who could care less about it. And I've said to me, really, you watch this on TV? Yes, you can get a lot of other stuff down while baseball games go on. So we're having this discussion. I have kind of this list of vocabulary words that can ensure come up during the discussion. But the whole point is just to try to level the playing field a little bit. And one of the pieces, one of the things we had to talk about were what, what does a season pass look like? And how is that different from single game tickets? Well, the next day, when the students did their practice performance task, that's the aspect that the questions turned out to be about. So the performance task for the students, most of them had between four and six questions in that part of the test. And they were all on the same topic. And unlike the other parts of the test where the students got one question at a time, and they would finish it and go on to the next. And the next question might be completely different topic in math, no relationship to the, to the first question. All of the questions on the performance task, they're all related, they're all about the same topic. The students can see all the questions at once, they can go back and forth. Sometimes you need something that you did on question one or two, you might need in one of the later questions. So the practice question for the eighth graders was about determining, given some information, when does it make sense to buy the season pass versus paying for the single game tickets? So they had to do some math around cost analysis. They had to, they had to look at three different sections of the ballpark and determine, was that break-even point the same when you had box seats? Was it the same when you were sitting out in the bleachers? So it was pretty engaging, even for students who didn't particularly care about baseball. It was still an engaging task. And so we can't talk about what the real topics were, but it was a similar kind of idea. We had classroom discussion, and the next day, some small aspect of that classroom discussion ended up being what those questions were about. But as Mrs. Nichols said, the students took it very seriously. They worked very diligently the whole time. When we talked to them later about their experience with the test, they thought we had over-prepared. So, of course, if we hadn't spent all that time practicing, they might have had a different response. But, you know, we, we really built this up. This is a brand-new test, gonna be really different, it's gonna be really tough. And so the response I got from a lot of my students is, I don't know what you were talking about. I hope that wasn't that hard. They thought it was similar to the NWA that they've been taking, at least in rigor. My eighth-grade algebra students could really talk very specifically about their experiences with the computer adaptive test. And they could tell when the questions were getting harder. And they could tell when all of a sudden they were onto a different topic. And they'd like, in their minds, they're like, oh, must not have gotten that one right. Because now I'm on to, all of a sudden, I'm on to geometry. So they were able to talk very specifically about, about that, which tells me that they were doing well. They knew what they were doing. We talked a little bit more about it today, just overall, how did you feel? I did get this one student say, well, you know, Mrs. Simpson, we didn't have any algebra homework the whole time we were doing Smarter Balance. I love Smarter Balance! So, some Language Arts?
All right, so very similar responses. I'm Jen Bowman McKay, I teach sixth grade at Reesbrock. I think it's similar in terms of the timing, except for Language Arts. A lot more of our kids, I think, went over that time because there's a lot of writing, a lot of writing. Maybe not as similar, though. The activity portion, at least in the sixth grade, was a little more vague in relation to the performance task. So much so that on the actual test, I had one student say, I think I have the wrong test because it was so remotely connected. It was more obvious to me, but, you know, for a sixth grader, the, the activity portion in Language Arts is very specific. And so when you go to do the, the actual test, they, they weren't really finding that, that link. So I think next year, I might point out that, just keep in mind, this is a sort of a mindset or a frame of mind. And that it's, you know, just because we're studying nutrition, you're not, the whole performance task might not be on nutrition. It might just be on vitamins, which is actually what it was for the practice test. For me, I think, I use the students as our compass for these kind of things, as we all do. And they really did not complain, which is the biggest thing. They will complain if it's awful. And they didn't complain, I thought they would. And, because it, it is a lot of writing. This test is a lot of writing. But I think because it's digital, that's a big difference for them. And they love that. And, you know, NWA is digital too, but it's different. It's just a lot of staring at the screen and making decisions. And this is different. This is, you know, compiling the, the information and analyzing and, and...
It's more interactive?
It's more interactive.
A, B, C, or D?
Exactly. It's a lot more writing. And they did not come out complaining, and that is huge to us. And in terms of the preparation, I can see how next year, how we might be able to pare that down. It did take a lot of our class time. But I think, just like anything you do for the first time, you're, you're going to take a lot longer the first time around. That was a bit of a complaint on my floor, anyway. But I, I could see how next year, we would do that differently. And I can't say that we wouldn't do it just the same way to prepare ourselves because we needed to see the tools that the kids were using and be able to answer those questions during test time and know what we needed to do. But to be able to sit there and look at the screen while they tested and know who was on what question and who was using what tools, that was really beneficial. And, and have this genius help desk that, that Regan set up at the end of the hall. I just love that idea. For someone like me, that's necessary. But there were very few glitches, quite frankly, except for that one day where it really was a state's fault, not ours. And there were very few glitches. We all anticipated huge nightmares because so many people were all on at the same time. And it went really smoothly, so that was sixth grade.
And I don't, I'm Karen Field, and I teach eighth grade Language Arts at Reesbrock upstairs. And I have eighth graders. And if there's a population of our school that likes to complain, it's the eighth grade. And very little as well. It was, you know, finally, it makes, it made sense to them. They're understanding the idea of being tested every year, they know it's happening. What they always had a problem with was the paper and pen test. When they do very little paper and pen testing ever, from the time they're in third grade on. And so finally, the, the assessments that they were doing for these big state tests were matching up with the assessments that they've been doing in the classrooms. And it just, it made more sense to them. And they did care. And those help desks were, I, I couldn't help but think of Lucy sitting at her thing at Peanuts every time I looked at it. And I giggled about that every day, probably to the point of it not being funny, but I still think it's funny. But I, I just, I, it wasn't a nightmare, and I think our district did do a great job. I don't think, really, not that I'm disagreeing, that we spent any more time than we used to spend preparing kids for the KNECAPs. I think it's the same amount of time that we spent. I think what we were doing to prepare was different, and so, and it was new. And so maybe it felt more, you know, drawn out. But I wouldn't want to have spent any more time preparing. I think we did a good job. I feel like as teachers, to be honest, I feel like that's all we've been doing in our PD since a year and a half ago when we started taking the tests. And I think we were ready to go with that. And I think each year, if this continues and doesn't go away, our students have had these, these sessions where they've been prepared. My own son is in the, the fourth grade, and he came home in like November, talking about getting prepared for it and, and using the tools in his tech class at Wetherby and, you know. So I think, I think we've done a good job. All of us, not just, trust me, but almost.
Of course.
But the kids did a great job. The kids really did a great job.
And the kids that are going to be anxious about testing are gonna be anxious about testing. And the kids that are gonna finish in 20 seconds are the kids that are gonna finish...
Still finishing in 20 seconds.
In 20 seconds. No, you know, and I hate to say that, but that, that is the reality, and we do our best.
Maybe not 20 seconds, 20 minutes.
20 minutes.
Thank you.
So that, I think, what I'd like to do is take any questions that you have, and then we'll talk to you.
There's something that strikes me as rather odd, to the point of bizarre, about one aspect of this test. And that is that different students get different questions depending on how they answered previous questions. And one of the, one of the interesting aspects of standardized tests is that they are standardized. And each student gets the same question so that the, the, the final score is comparable. But if students have different questions, then the final score is obviously not comparable.
Well, we've been using the computer adaptive type of mechanism with NWA for years now. And the RIT scale, which stands for, does anyone know, it's the Roush? Has been set up like inches and feet. So that if you, just like when you grow, if you grow to four feet, six inches, you're a four-foot-six-inch person. If you're five-one, you're five-one. And so these scales are made so that we can have some comparability based on the leveling of the questions. And their scoring puts them at a point where we can make a decision about instructional readiness. So actually, in my opinion, it's a better, it's a better situation for schools because we can give a pinpoint around what types of groupings we should do. When we're getting purely standardized scores back, it's making things global decisions rather than discreet decisions for instruction.
Well, I, I can see your point in that it, it, it gives you a better idea as to how you can tailor further education for a particular student. But I'm still concerned about the comparability of the scores from one student to another because that simply wouldn't be comparable.
But isn't that true of proficiency-based education? Some kids come up with a different score than others just because of how they're pacing? That's why one gets a four, one gets a three, and this does the same thing, right? Depending on how far you go in each one. You may go further here and here, so then as your total score comes out, you're kind of compared with everybody else. So it is apples to apples, you just might do better in one section than somebody else, right?
Correct. And it's along the spectrum of the standards. Some will get to the end, and some will be back here a bit. So, yes, it is helpful to us.
But with proficiency-based education, one, one child gets a four because they have progressed farther than the child who got the three.
Right. Same with tests?
But you keep throwing harder questions at a kid until you get them wrong, as opposed to that one kid that went along the same... I see where you're coming from. You're saying you keep making the questions harder and harder based on the ones that you got right, whereas somebody who didn't get it right is not gonna get a harder question, but I guess...
But wouldn't the person that's getting harder questions get a better score?
Yes.
So those...
It's not like, it's not, it's not like a, a score that's a percentage of the...
The ones you get right.
The ones you get correct. When, I've been seeing what the scores are going to look like for Smarter Balance. But for the NWA, which is also a computer adaptive test that we've been taking for quite a while, we get, you get, still get a percentile score. So if you're interested in comparing students and how they did, you're still seeing which of your students are in the 50th percentile, which ones are in the 75th, who's in the 99th percentile. So we still have a mechanism, if we are interested in it, to compare students' performance on that test, as well as be able to see in specific areas how students did. And what we're, what we're interested in is, is the growth. So we're looking at each student and looking at what their score was, say, in September, and then their score in May. And we're looking to see, for that student, how much growth did they make? But we still have those kind of, you know, old-fashioned, if you want to call them, percentile scores, which we can use to, if we were interested, we could rank, rank our students on that task.
Well, percentile scores are clearly based on comparing one student to an entire population. I understand that completely. But let me give you an example of my concern. Let's say that you have 100 questions, okay? But, but each student only gets maybe 50 questions based on their pattern of answering. But the student who has answered one, one question maybe halfway through one set incorrectly might well have answered a substantial number of the later questions correctly, but never got a chance to, simply because they, they missed one question. It, it just puzzles me.
Would it, would it be fair to say that it's actually, I, I think I'm starting to grasp it talking to Jason, like resistance. If you're lifting a dumbbell that's one weight, you lift it so many times. But if you put rubber bands on it or a chain on it, the higher you lift it, the harder it gets. And so, in fact, you're actually getting a better spectrum of what the kids can answer for questions because it's not just a preset. You might put a bunch of easy questions, the kid can blow through and get 100, and then say, okay, you got 100. But if you say, okay, he answered questions up until the eighth grade level, I mean, is that, so it's saying, okay, this kid was able to progress beyond what his grade level would be, and we asked him questions that probably shouldn't have been able to answer, but he was, so it gives you a better spectrum as opposed to a set?
Yes.
One out of 100 score?
It takes away the nature of the ceiling.
Okay.
And what I would also offer is that NWA, which has been the test we've been using, I think that their question bank is so diverse that they are able to really serve up questions that give a variety, really test that tension, and, and push it. We've seen students at middle school level who have scored as well as any high school junior or senior. This test, Smarter Balance, they're telling us right now, they're still building their question bank. So the ability for that ceiling to be as high as we would want it to be right now probably isn't there. But it will be in time. So we'll get a better feel for exactly how this works.
And with this, aren't they also, to that point, kind of figuring out the process capability of what this test can, can have? And then also, won't we, if we have more kids going deeper into this test, when it comes to our profile, won't it make it so that when you look at our scores compared to somebody else? If I'm looking for a school district where my child's gonna be challenged because we're all brilliant, because we're all brilliant kids, I'm gonna go to Hampden because look how they're doing on the Smarter Balance, right?
I'm saying that that would be the profile... I'm saying that that would be the profile that we'd give in time. I'm really impressed with the writing on this test. And watching, you know, I'm watching on the backside because I'm doing a lot of the makeup. So they've done a lot of the work already in the class. But just, you know, I'm not allowed to be reading over their shoulders, but just watching sheer volume right now of what's coming out. I'm really impressed. It says a lot for our ELA program. We have ELA, just language arts class going on, with writing around literature. Then they move into a writing block every other day in our school. But we've implemented a new curriculum. I just, I think it's really paying off. Their comfort level with writing is wonderful.
One more question.
Yeah.
So this might be asking a lot after this. But that group of folks, so you get your top 30 to 40 percent. And you get, like you said, the people that finish in 20 seconds and the people that take all day. And you have that group, you know, as, as we locate, it seems like our country's really involved in that bottom 25 or what kind of growth group? Will this, as you said, pinpointing, will this allow us to better meet that student so that we should be able to get better growth out of that group from what we're learning from this test and then tie it into our curriculum and back in?
We hope so. We're hoping right now that what we'll see is that those mathematics in ELA claims that were there, we'll be able to see breakdowns in the score report of how they do in each of those areas. It won't just be a math score. It'll be nicely tiered out. So then we can go ahead and either make curriculum decisions, which is what we originally got to talk to you about. We, we've replaced our math curriculum this year because of data we had seen in kneecap. And we hope with this, we'll either get some validation that things are working or we need to tweak. And we'll make decisions either curricular wise or interventions wise.
And that's what I was actually going to ask for you then, is that it would be really I'm fascinated by data and to how do you come back after you get the report? And hopefully June, you said.
Right.
So we'll give you some time. But how this new report might be able to better inform decisions and provide that link for us in the future as to, you know, changes that you're moving forward.
That's right. We can do that. So on the PowerPoint that you were sent, we have links for you. And you can go right into these links off your PowerPoint. It should work for you. And take a practice test. And you can do this at home for homework.
Well, it's adapted. You said with the gray line.
Mr. Lance will tell you about his experience. He chose what grade?
Just grade. He didn't, he didn't make it. He didn't make it.
Do you want me to go through this? Okay, does it work? I'm going to skip that. So I'm not, we've also taken more.
Keep digging higher, I can tell you that.
Check it out. It will walk you through the different aspects you just need to click on. You'll need to select whether you want ELA or you want math and what grade level you'd like to try out. You can go in, do a few, back out and try something else.
So like Karen suggested, we'll have a report back before members in June.
You better.
And so this is, this is a little slurs. I'm not going to try to go all over through it. But if you, when you get to this page, if you're going to be there to try this, just choo, you can choose the top link. And there are a couple, you don't have to go through a couple of screens. Just keep saying yes, 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 yes. Pick your grade level and just keep saying yes.
So Mrs. Simpson?
Yes.
In the spirit of transparency, with the research that came out yesterday, I'm sure you share with your children, the most impressive ballpark to attend is?
Wow, is it Penny Park?
Absolutely. High five?
Well, you know, success and all that. Although not today.
But it's also because they have true instincts when they have a day.
That's right.
Thank you very much, ladies. Thanks. Okay, just, unfortunately, that's mundane, just to keep you abreast of three bills that are going through the legislative pumpeers. One is eliminate the performance, school performance grading system. I have no update on that one. But I do have an update on the second one with respect to mandating that those high schools start early in the eight thirty. I've been told that that should be done in committee. We were really concerned if you read the summary of that, where it brings out the fact that you have to have 11 hours of uninterrupted time after the last co-curricular activity ends.
Dr. Ginni.
Right. So I was saying to Mr. Bissin this morning, well, if we have a basketball team at Edward Little High School, we get home at 10 o'clock. And that means that students can't come into school until nine o'clock in the morning. So I'm pretty confident mine is acknowledging that one should be done in committee. And the final bill that we will monitor would be opposing a two-year delay on the use of standardized tests to evaluate teachers. So we'll see where that one is in the mix as well. I believe you had a state board meeting today. Anything relevant with, with these bills or anything you want to share?
Today was charter school, but in front of the head committee. So they were beginning up on charter school.
Okay. So I'll give you a more comprehensive update as the legislative process unfolds in the next coming weeks and at first meeting in May. Okay, Mariah and Olivia.
Well, a group of Henson Academy French and Spanish students are actually traveling to Spain and Paris this coming weekend. So that's very exciting. Also, members of the National Honor Society have been going to either their library to tutor elementary students for the past two months. So that's been going well too. And the National Honor Society, and sometime in May, is going to the Philip Strickland House to host a veterans' prom. And we are actually dressing up in prom gowns and going as their guests. So excited.
Also, spring sports are up and running. And the end of the quarter was last Friday. And also today, you rolled the majority of juniors to the SATs. It's been a long day.
Did you take the SAT?
I did. It wasn't as bad as I thought it would be, but it wasn't fun.
Mariah also participated in the principal interview this afternoon as well. So she's had a very busy day. Our robotics team is in Louisville, Kentucky. But Mrs. Yaley had a little story to tell us because it didn't go as seamlessly as we.
Right. So actually I have an update.
But they are there.
They are there. They left at 5:30 yesterday. Well, they got to the airport at 5:30 yesterday morning and their flight took off, I think, at 10 to seven. And they landed in Philadelphia and sat on the tarmac for over an hour. And so missed their connecting flight. And we're told that if they didn't get a flight out somewhere, they would be stuck there for two days. So fortunately, Mrs. Moore, my secretary, got on the phone and started agitating people. And they ended up getting a flight to, they're in Louisville, so something else with an L in Kentucky.
Eighty miles away, right?
Lexington. And they landed there and the, actually, the airline was gracious enough to give them vouchers for taxis to take them 80 miles. But they turned it around because they wanted to give them, put them in three different vehicles. And there's only two adult supervisors. And so Mr. Moore talked to them and they got us a 15-passenger van. They landed, I don't know, maybe five, some 5:30 in Lexington. And this part you don't know about is that they got in this 15-passenger van with a driver, drove 10 miles, had a blowout. Almost, honestly, almost, the van almost flipped over. Pulled off to the side of the road, got the kids up on the, in the green grass where they were playing guitars and having a good time. And the, the place that gave them the 15-passenger van sent two smaller vans and two drivers. And they got to Louisville by 8:10, had dinner and got to bed by 11:00. But their robots got there in one, all, in the, the right pieces they were supposed to be in. So they were pretty happy.
Actually, I did know about the blowout.
Oh, did you?
Because Mrs. Moore is on the principal interview committee.
Oh, so that's true.
That's the chatter we had before we started our business.
So that was pretty scary.
Yeah, that was pretty scary, yes. So they're safe and sound.
They are safe and sound and happy that their robots are working.
Okay, all right. Anyone?
I have, I did not provide an update in my, but I do want to plant the seed this evening that we may have a potential arbitration case with J&amp;J Contractors in RSU 22. I don't have the specifics yet. But I wanted to give you an update because we have a lot of new board members sitting around specifically related to holding up a subcontractor schedule and causing, and causing some complications in regards to time. So it's something that's, that happens. It is what it is. And I will get you some more information as I probably will get it more tomorrow and then send you that in the mail. And then we'll have our legal counsel here to review the specificities because of, many of you are, were not here with the high school project.
We can only say is so many things in public, but just as a backdrop, this has been a situation that has been present probably for nine to 12 months approximately.
At least.
So the board has, the board has had conversation in executive session prior to this day. So it's nothing new, so to speak. So we'll keep you abreast at the next board meeting, executive session. And after the chair of the building committee back then, Kelly, the former chair, have been involved and probably, well, a number of you have been involved. So we'll give you an update at the next meeting.
Just to plant the seed so you don't be so broad.
Okay, Eric, thank you, sir.
Okay, are there inspections on board members? Any old business?
We have old business. We are going to discuss an act on the second reading and adoption of the 2015-16 school calendar. So we've had no modifications since the first reading. So I would recommend the board approval and adoption of the 2015-16 school calendar as presented.
Dr.?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Discuss an act on overnight field trip. I gave you a very quick blurb in your agenda notes. Mrs. Jackson is here with us tonight. Mrs. Nichols, do you want to inter allet or do any further overview?
So Mrs. Jackson is our explorer teacher for GT in grade seven. And we have a group of students who has really spearheaded coming up with a trip that interests them and promotes some of the study of things that interest them in our standards for our westernized curriculum. So I'll let Mrs. Jackson talk to you more about the specific details for June 11 through the 13th.
I've been teaching in this district since 1980. And these students that I have now in seventh and eighth grade were my former students in third, fourth and fifth grades. So the continuity's been wonderful. And for the first time, I've been at Reed's Brook and Wagner Middle Schools with the GT program. And it's been a wonderful experience. I've also, I've already resigned. As I think you guys realize, I've submitted my letter of resignation for next year. And I plan to retire at the end of this year, at, in June. But in brainstorming with these seventh graders at the beginning of this school year, I asked them to come up with project ideas that would be, one, my top requirement rigorous, challenging for them, but something that would be exciting for us to do together this year in a middle school context as opposed to the elementary context that I knew them in prior to this year. And the children came up with the idea of a two-night camping trip at Baxter State Park. And they started brainstorming all kinds of things that we could do in terms of learning experiences and so forth, going to Baxter. And that was part of a very large brainstorm list of ideas, which I just let sit and would continue the year going into different types of projects. And of course, being middle school kids come January, it is popping up again as an idea that they really wanted to fulfill and work toward. So we are here because this field trip will involve two nights. We plan to go Thursday, Friday and Saturday on June 11th, 12th and 13th. And we're not asking for any money from the district. Originally, the children were going to be trying to write some grants to obtain funding for this project, which we figure will cost perhaps between $1,500 and $2,000. We were late for our funding deadlines for the grants. They were passed by the time the children were set to write these grants. So now what we're doing is the children have each written to 12, 11 and 12 businesses in the Hamden Bangor Brewer area. We're asking for contributions for this trip. And we're trying to, through bake sales and your typical fundraising activities, come up with the funding that will allow us to do this. So that's.
Thank you. So per board policy, we need to have the board approve the overnight field trip.
Dr.?
Need a question?
Where the liability concerns with professional use of vehicles for school businesses, right?
Yeah.
Are we covered?
And the parents and whoever's driving is aware of that. The district, the district will pay for liability. But the individual knows that the district will not pay for property damage. So in other words, if it goes off the road, the liability is covered, but the car is not covered, they are aware of it before they leave. There's just, it's, it's so expensive to have both liability and property damage for a, for a volunteer. But we do have the liability piece. And we ask for their licenses, make a car and who's driving.
And prove insurance.
They have to have proof of insurance.
Now, how, how many kids are going?
Pardon me?
How many, how many kids are going?
We're talking 14.
14.
And I have four chaperones, myself included.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Thank you, George. Good luck.
Great for sun.
Okay, our next question is discuss an act on endorsement of 2015-16 school district budget. This has been presented and unanimously approved by the budget committee. So at this time, this requires board action. So I'd recommend, if you reference my agenda notes, that we approve the 15-16 budget at a level of $29,548,781.85. And as a result of that, we'll establish the district budget meeting on Thursday, June 4th, to be followed by the refer on the validation vote on Tuesday, June 9th.
I made a motion to recommend endorsement of the school budget 15-16 at the level of $29,548,781.85.
Any questions?
I recommend that in the future, we round all numbers in our budgets to the round figure which is closest to one-tenth of one percent of the final figure.
Yes, sir, Mr. Conchell. And our auditors will tell us. We can't do that.
No. Excuse me, I've talked to the lawyers and they said that under the law, we can.
Lawyers and lawyers and accountants.
So the auditors say that we can't round numbers?
We cannot. That's correct.
The auditors need to study some other methods.
That's why they get paid.
That's right. That's why the lawyers get paid.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of approving the budget? We also, Eric, will be establishing a public forum a lot of part of May for the community of Winterport. So we'll have to have a forum before the vote. Now we will.
I have a point of new business.
Sure.
I was hoping that we could propose a subcommittee to look at the viability of a concert promoter for Performing Arts Center. Would that go under questions from board members?
What we can do is we can put it on the next agenda. And we can have an open discussion. So say it again, Tony, for me, please.
So I'd like to, I'd like to set up a subcommittee that would investigate a concert promoter for Performing Arts Center, both for performing arts and for academics. We, we have the Beekeepers Society here. We have the second floor that could hold, you know, a dental conference. It could hold CMEs. And it would be a source of revenue, say. saved. Anyway, that would be what I'd like to look at.
Okay, very good. We'll have it on the next agenda. So Eric, on meetings, we have, so, so the school vacation next week, and our next board meeting will be on the sixth. That's preceded with the education committee. So we know, we do not need a budget committee, we need a policy committee. Do you want to establish that at this time? Do we need? Yeah. Mary and, uh, we had some policies the other night, we'll be bringing it forward. So do you want to, we establish that at the next board meeting, and we'll bring those policies, you folks work on Monday night, don't you do that?
Or we can do it two weeks. That's a goal, and we can possibly bring...
All right. We're, I have a meeting that night. Can we do it the fifth?
I'm happy to go the fifth.
Okay. That's Karen.
Are you planning on the fifth?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, I think so. That was a little added for me.
Okay.
But, um, I'll do my best.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just maybe a little rated this at six. We'll make it six thirty.
We can make it six thirty, maybe like... Six thirty, okay. Would you, Karen?
Uh, do my best.
Okay.
Thank you, Jesus.
Six thirty on the fifth now, okay. I think other than that, you know, you also...
Yeah, um, the reason why we're not talking about building committee yet because WBRC and I, Kristen Briggs and Tina Moore are meeting for educational, um, programs in the new, new project. So, um, after that, we'll probably take a look at an update.
I just happened to think about it because, believe it or not, obviously, May is around the corner. Reagan, what is the date of your eighth grade ceremony?
Uh, June fifteenth.
Okay, so if that's of interest to you, put that in your calendar. So Reeds Brook and Wagner, June fifteenth. Handen Academy graduation is one-thirty, June fourteenth.
What time is that?
One-thirty. So if you're interested in the HA graduation, Sunday the fourteenth.
January thirtieth.
Uh, January thirtieth? Okay. Okay, so that, those dates as well.
I'm just looking at my, at my email. Amy's dad died today, so for those of you who don't know Amy Fairclough, her dad died yesterday, so just for people who know her.
John.
Speaking of the budget?
Yes.
There is a district budget meeting coming. Is the date set yet?
Yeah, we did, yeah, June fourth.
June fourth.
We'll send it out in your calendar for June fourth, Thursday night.
We should all be strongly encouraged to go to set.
Yes, you absolutely should be. There's seven o'clock at the high school gym. Yes, sir. Okay. Pardon me? Pardon me, committee?
Uh, what happened? Yeah. Let's, let's, let's set my...
So with that, Eric, we keep with the executive session, okay? And, uh, I have the reception. The next...